Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
We're here to conduct a hearing. Anyone may address the council on the agenda items. Speakers should approach the podium one at a time and be recognized. Please provide your name for the record and then offer your statement. Two is a hearing and resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2025, 26 proposed property tax levy. I'll move that second. Public hearings now open. Anyone can come forward and speak.
Good afternoon, Paul Koskovich. I watched, I think, all the budget hearings that have went on since the first of the year to try and get up to speed of how everything's been going and what you guys are focused on. And I guess my thing is, I've heard a lot of complaints about how the state of their decisions are affecting what we're doing here. But I'm also reading that other cities in the state are also facing these and their taxes are not going up, guys. They're either even declining. Cities just right up the road that are thriving compared to Sioux City, Orange City, Sioux Center. I mean, they're kicking our tails in development. I think they got more housing permits than we do. And I just, I don't know why we continue to raise the taxes. Why are we not looking to lean up our government here? Trim the fat? I mean, what we talked about was, you know, the warming shelter, or not the warming shelter, the Human Rights Commission, that was a big cut. I mean, I looked it up. I mean, cities over like thirty thousand have to have one. Why do we have to have so many people? Can we cut that down? I mean, we have budgets that I looked at that, I mean, I don't want to single, like maybe even since the library. I mean, they got a four million dollar budget. I mean, that is a lot of overhead to cover four million bucks. I mean, I look at what my overhead is and how many people I have on staff and what we do. I'm just, I don't know why we're not looking to trim the fat here and lean up our government and really look at strong growth that's full-time here in Sioux City. Because again, I can't stress it enough, other towns are just absolutely kicking our tails. Small, big, everywhere. Sioux Falls, Omaha, Yankton. I brought tons of ideas to folks and you guys listen, but I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm, I don't know, I don't think my opinion's being weighed in. And I just, our taxes are out of control. They are top ten tax levy in the country. I mean, I saw it. I mean, top ten cities and we are like number six. That's insane. And I just don't know why we haven't addressed what we can do to cut our costs and not raise the levy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jim Hopkins. I live at forty-eight, forty-four, Singing Hills Boulevard. And my comments to the taxes in Sioux City is, my taxes went up almost eleven percent from what I paid in September twenty-three to March of twenty-four to what I'm paying now, September twenty-fourth to March twenty-five, my last installment of that. So that's up almost eleven percent from last year. And I look at this letter that came in the mail from, required by, I have a code twenty-four-two A, that my taxes look like they may be going up between the school and the county and the city, because that's always on that reference sheet, may going up an average of fifteen percent next year. And I don't always understand the calculations on that worksheet, but that's a concern. I know some of it is the failure of the state to backfill the issues that occurred several years ago. And I know that's a big issue and that's why you have to raise levies now. But my concern is, if my taxes went up five hundred and ninety-three dollars last year and I'm looking at maybe five hundred dollars or more this year, you know, when is this going to stop? That's the key concern I have. One other thing I have to ask is, do property valuations of an individual residence change every year or is it every other year when they reassess? One question I have, I don't know, I hear on TV we're supposed to get another letter from either the county auditor's office or the treasurer's office about more information on this, but I have this sheet from the twenty-four A, twenty-four point two A, notice. I have that. It's sometimes confusing. When I relate it back to my property statement I got to pay my taxes from this year for March of twenty-five and back in September of twenty-four. So, see if I have anything else. But overall, I guess from looking at those percentage of increases for the city, county and, city, county and school, averages out fifteen and a half percent increase on this letter for the three taxing authorities that run there. So again, it's going up another fifteen percent. Boy, that really hurts us. Not only the tax, but residents paying taxes. It hurts economic development, I think, companies coming to town. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes.
On your one question, the city assessor is going to be sending out notices this week on our assessed valuations. And they do that every other year. And this is an odd-numbered year. So you'll be getting a notice from the city assessor.
So that'll be an assessment for twenty-twenty-five?
On the valuation for January.
Valuation for twenty-twenty-five?
January one, twenty-twenty-five.
So we'll pay that eighteen months down the road?
Right, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Starting in September, eighteen months down the road.
Yeah, September twenty-six and, and April, or March of twenty-seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
You.
Jim, one other point, and I appreciate your information. And I've always known you from Morningside to be knowledgeable about this. And so I just wanted to say that I know I, as a council member, share your frustration, especially with the increase and the fact that we have to pass this along. Because let's be clear, the elimination of the backfill, which you referenced, as well as Senate File seven eighteen, if it weren't for those two bills that passed through the legislature, our tax asking would have actually went down this year. We could have been prepared for a lower levy if it weren't for those two bills.
Okay.
And, and while Mr. Koskovich, that was here previously before you, you know, said we need to trim the fat or what that could look like, it's very difficult when you have teams such as your law enforcement, fire department, other services that are already lean as it's, it's really difficult to do. I know the city of Des Moines wrestled with that. And I know they cut a number of their police officers because they said, we, we just aren't made whole anymore.
Okay.
And so that's happening across the state. But I just wanted you to know that that letter, those numbers that you see on there, that's the maximum asking.
Okay.
That's not what we're intending to propose. No one on this council has proposed that number. The state forces our hand with a bill that was introduced last year that we actually have to publish notice saying this is the absolute maximum of what we could tax our citizens. And honestly, it frustrates, I think, all of us because it just terrifies residents. And it's not, we never want that to be intended.
So when you say that the tax rate or amount, that's the seventeen point two-three levy proposed?
Correct.
Okay. So that could go down, but it can't go any higher?
Correct.
Okay. And one good, the other thing that I'm just thought of standing here is that bill in the legislature supposedly is going to be some more tax relief that hasn't passed yet, but it's being debated. So.
And, and what's frustrating about that, Jim, is like these other ones, they appear to be a tax break, but they actually just pass that along to the residents.
Pass it back to us, yeah.
And then don't leave this, they leave the cities to pick up the slack.
Oh, yeah.
It's like they want to capitalize on a tax break, but then we're, we're left, how do we pay for the services? And so that's where the frustration.
Makes all you look best.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd also like to speak up about the property tax increases as well. I know you guys are talking about it's a, like a worst case.
Can I get your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jesse. I am a Sioux City resident.
Need your last name.
I don't like to give my last name because I feel like you could be targeted by the city if you say something that upsets somebody. So I'm Jesse. I'm a mortgage owner, a homeowner in Sioux City. And I come here about every time you guys have these increases. A lot of it is, most people are at work when you have these meetings, which really sucks. I would also hope that you guys could maybe communicate to your city residents a little bit better what this money's for, other, other ideas we could raise this money. I think that volunteerism is a really big thing. When a lot of citizens wanted all this funding for the wall down in Mexico, everybody pulled their money together. So I think that we need to look at things like that instead of always raising our property taxes. I think it's really heartbreaking for these elderly people. They're on fixed incomes. I know my father's retired. He's not going to get more money every time you guys raise your property taxes on us. I also think that, and I'm told that this is on the, on the books as far as they're trying to end property taxes for people over certain ages. I think that that's huge. I also was wondering if you guys could set up some kind of phone app to where you actually send this stuff to our phones and we give you our feedback through our smart devices. Because we're all at work when you guys vote for this stuff. And honestly, if, if I didn't put it on Facebook, a lot of people wouldn't even know about this. I mean, I know you guys send out letters, but there's a lot of people that are renting homes. How do they know about their rent going up until it happens? And then they're mad at their landlords because their rent went up. You see what I'm saying? So this is so, it affects so many people on such a domino effect. It's really heartbreaking that that is always the solution is, we need more money. We need, we need to spend more. Do you guys have a committee that looks at your books like, like, kind of like we're doing Doze right now for the country? Just curious. You guys got anybody that looks at your books to maybe?
Audit it every year.
Okay. And who does that auditing? Just for people that maybe don't know that are in this meeting or?
Teresa, what's the name of our auditor?
It's Teresa Fitch, Finance Director Bergen, does our audit. They're a national firm and they do do an audit every year. I will say that through the budget process, we do, we go through at least four layers of reviews of the budget.
That's good to know. I mean, we like hearing this.
We cut several millions of dollars this year. And prior to coming to that session, we went through our phases, but we went through another additional with every single department. Sarah Sworjen, the budget manager, and I sat down with every single director to come up with more cuts. And we did cut a significant amount of money at the time. So the directors are very diligent about it. Our city council is extremely diligent about it. So we do work hard. There are a lot of things against us, like they've said today. But I do think on our end, we try. Very difficult. I mean, we, we live in the city too. So we're very conscious of it as well.
I get it. So do you guys do this like every other year? Is that kind of, is there like a schedule for this?
Every year.
Every year.
Every year? Okay.
We do have budget hearings too, on, to Saturdays, one in January, one in February that.
And those are on Saturdays?
Yep, they're on Saturday.
They're open to the public.
And you're open to the public and available to come. We have a CIP, which is our capital hearing and our operating hearing.
I just wonder if you guys could come up with other ideas to, than always raising our property tax. I mean, I think volunteerism is so huge in this country. I feel like, I feel like people that maybe got a little more money would maybe help the people that don't in this community as far as that goes. So if you guys come, could come up with better ideas. I'd also like to see some kind of setup in this entire country. I think at the local level, you guys could set an example, is we have phone apps, we have smart devices, we have all those ways to get this stuff to our phones. And we let you know how we want you to vote without even having these meetings while people are at work. I mean, I think if you heard more of the taxpayers' input on what you guys vote for, maybe it might help your decisions better or maybe the backlash from decisions that you may have made, made or will make. You see what I'm saying?
We do have some links on the city's website that
Okay.
let you email directly to us.
That's good to know.
So you can go right on there and we get that on our smartphones as well, have access to our email. Something that you brought up was the possibility of wiping out property tax for seniors.
Yes.
You're right. There is Senate File twenty-nine and in Iowa, so this will be across the state, that during this session, it will be decided whether to change the homestead exemption to up to six thousand five hundred dollars for any homeowner with the homestead exemption, six thousand five hundred dollars. So if your parent is sixty-five years old or older, and let's say their property tax is three thousand dollars, their new property tax will be zero.
That would be huge. And I hope that.
Well, it will be huge, but in more ways than one. They're proposing the same thing for veterans, which again, is a great cause. And their exemption would be four thousand dollars. Now, there are no income guidelines, actual criteria to these two exemptions. Iowa is a very aging state, as you know.
Yes.
And our assessor has told me that he believes as much as thirty-one percent of our county is sixty-five or older, the property owners.
I mean, you're going to have elderly people getting jobs just to pay their property taxes.
No, it's quite the opposite. They're not going to have property taxes.
No, I'm saying, if, if that doesn't pass and we always see these increases is what I was getting at.
Okay, so if we do exempt that, so that would mean myself, I will not owe any property taxes where I live. My property tax is around five thousand dollars a year.
So you're on the same ship, definitely.
Absolutely. But should I have zero property taxes? I'm enjoying the streets. I'm enjoying the storm sewers. I'm enjoying all the repairs that the city does for the city that I live
in. Tax people to death. I mean, you got to understand.
No, I'm not saying that we should tax them to death, but I'm just saying, at a state level.
We're coming out of COVID and I think that people got to understand that COVID has doubled poverty and doubled the classes or the ruling class's wealth. So I think we need to look at that. Inflation is burying us. I mean, my eighty thousand dollar home is worth two hundred and thirty thousand. So that's insane because if I sold my house right now, I'd have to spend a lot more money just to get the exact same house.
Yes, you're right.
That's where it's getting ridiculous.
Yep, you're right.
I think we're just exhausted as taxpayers. And we need to, we need to fight here first and then we can fight it up our way up. But.
Yep. But I do want to, I do want to circle back to my point. So across the state of Iowa, if all of our homeowners that are sixty-five years old no longer have a property tax, who is going to make up that revenue difference to every city across Iowa? It's not just Sioux City. It's every city. Where is that sixty-five hundred dollars or less going to come from if the state wipes that out?
Volunteerism.
Volunteerism doesn't.
I mean, would they have Girl Scouts selling cookies to raise money? How many cookies have you guys sold this year?
I have a Girl Scout at home, so I've sold quite a few cookies, actually.
There you go. But you see what I'm saying, you know?
I do. But do you understand what I'm saying as well, sir? Is that the state is pulling funds from our budgets.
I understand that.
And but they're not returning them. So I just want you to be aware of that. Yep, we are.
At the end of the day, nobody in this town wants a property tax increase.
No, nobody does. I don't want my taxes going up either.
Eighty percent of us are living paycheck to paycheck, so.
I don't want my taxes going up either.
I appreciate your time, though. I think I've said what I needed to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, my name is Jeremy McLaughlin. I am a homeowner and new business owner here in Siouxland. Our business is investing into real estate within our Sioux City market. And myself and some of our, my partners, we're really striving to make affordable rent within the single-family homes in Siouxland. And my concern, I guess, is with property taxes that are going to continue, more than likely to go up year after year after year. It's hard for us to maintain affordability level that we want to strive to, right? So in order to, you know, just like with any business, you know, expenses go up, rents go up. You know, we still have to keep our head afloat to be able to maintain the properties, you know, keep them curb appeal, make them look, you know, proper, have people proud to rent from us and build that name for us. So I guess that is just my two cents on what we foresee maybe being an issue for us as new business investing into Siouxland. Second thing is, is the letter you guys sent out, the numbers that were on the letter, they just rang and rang and rang. We weren't able to get anybody to pick up, to answer questions that my business partners had. So just, just let you guys know that there wasn't a way to get questions answered.
I don't think we see.
Finance Director, so ours for the city actually directly rings to Sarah and she answered hundreds of phone calls. So I don't know what.
No, the, the letter that came out with like the proposed like numbers and stuff that were like the maxims or whatever.
So did you, were you looking at the city phone number or?
The numbers that were on the sheet.
Because there's, there was one for the city.
Very cold. And she wasn't able to get, it just rang and rang and rang. No answer machine. It just rang.
So there's actually three numbers on there, one for the city, county, and one for the schools. I can't speak for the county or the schools. But I know that Sarah and I have vetted hundreds of phone calls. So I don't know.
But that was just, I'm just giving you some feedback of what our experience was. So if that was our experience, you know, maybe there was other people that wanted to attend that weren't able to, to try to get questions answered. So I'm just giving my two cents and what I have to say. So.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ozzy Loera, fifteen eighteen Silver Street. I've been here a couple times before. My biggest question is, the time of the meetings. Come on, three-thirty. I had to get my kids out of school to be here. Well, I have the luxury. I can get out anytime I want. Most people don't. When you guys do these meetings so early, you guys look like you guys doing some something shady stuff. Okay? You're trying to do this underhanded stuff. Can we hold some of the meetings around six o'clock? Because most people work at this time. You only have a very few people out here coming saying whatever they want to say against the property taxes. If we can, so we can have more input from the people. Okay? So we can hear, not just a few, few people over here protesting. You take it in, do whatever you guys want, boom, boom, boom. We have the more, we need more people coming here in the afternoon. You're in at six o'clock, like I said. You guys look like you're doing something shady. You guys want to seem like you really care about the people? Make the meetings a little later. Okay? Because that's to me, that's what it looks like. It, man, something underhanded going on here. They want to pass the meetings down. They want to do this. They want to that. And I know property taxes, and taxes, it's a way of life. Things have to go up. And from when you said earlier, I can't hear for one ear. So you said that the state is tying your hand behind your hand, your hands, they're lowering the, everything they're doing, trying to cuss costs and everything and every, I understand that. You know, and it's up to you guys to make up the difference. But it's time for you guys in every city out there, it's either to do things, cuts, which is tragic, but you have to cut here and there programs. And we have to see in things that we invest in, why is it going higher? Why are we spending so much? It's either let go of people or start telling the people upstairs, the state, hey, you can't be cutting those programs. You can't be cutting the money. It's time for you guys to stand up together and complain up there, you know?
I went, I, just so you know, I went to Des Moines multiple times this year.
But not just, not just one person. You need multitudes of person. So you guys, you got a city, not just one city council, from different cities, go in a group, a bunch of groups, say, yeah, it's easy for you to say, yeah, let's cut the taxes here. But what are we going to do? Because like I said, unfortunately, yeah, taxes are needed to fix the roads, which we don't have in Sioux City. All this other stuff, it's needed. See, propose some people, elderly people don't pay taxes, can make up for the other people. I understand that. Two, it has to be all levied. But when we getting percentage-wise, when my taxes go up fifty, a hundred percent year after year, it's like, come on, man. Some of those laws here are ridiculous. There's, I have family in California that's had, their homes are worth half, about a million dollars and they pay less taxes because their grandfather, when they bought it. And then from there, it's only a certain percentage every year. Okay, it goes up every year. If you sell the home, whoever comes in, then they get to pay the new price. Here, we're going up. We, it's time for us to stand up and say something, hey, enough is enough. You guys can't be doing that. Don't be afraid, whatever it is, because we're getting sick and tired. We're getting, inflation's coming up, this and this. It's like, we're getting, damn, everywhere. We're getting hit from everywhere. You know, we're getting, everyone's getting tired. And you guys are in front of it. You guys are, you guys are going to be, look that, you might, someone might go to a house, make your house or whatever, you know? People are dumb. They'll lose stuff. They'll take it out. So first thing I would say is to just start with at least making the meetings later during the day so they have a chance to come. And they can say, well, I didn't go to the meetings. If you can't come to the meetings at six o'clock, then you shut the hell up and go. You don't have, you don't, you don't say nothing. Just take it how it is. At least it gives the opportunity for more people to show up and see what they're saying, their concerns, where this going. So we can take that up, upstairs. So we can, so they don't cut our funding. Like I said, it's getting expensive. But you need to also look at cuts. Where can we make the cuts? How can we make the cuts? It's hard to make cuts. But when things are tough, sometimes you got to make cuts. I do it in my business.
I'm going to have you wrap it up if you can, please.
I will. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, just to respond to a couple of things that you had, the meeting time that we have is a state mandate. And I, I think we had this talk last year too, because I remember speaking with you after.
Yeah.
And then I, I might be wrong here, but I thought, I thought at the time we had to meet an hour before. We had to open it up an hour before our regular meeting.
Yeah.
And so last year, I'm fairly certain, and I could be wrong here, that we did it at like three o'clock. Because I know I had to take extra time off of school just so I could make it here.
Yeah.
I had to have the wife pick up the kids and everything. And it was a whole ordeal. Now, it had to be a half hour before our regularly scheduled meeting. We have to have fifteen minutes before and fifteen minutes after of just no time. So once everybody's done talking, I believe we'll have to wait fifteen minutes to start our regular meeting, correct? So that is a state mandate. So we, we can't really change that time. We could add it to the end of our meeting, but we don't know when it's going to end.
Well, something has to happen. Because if it's state mandate, yes, it is. It's just, why are these times? People cannot come.
See, and that's the thing. It's another state mandate. And if, if we don't like the legislation that's coming down at the state level, we need people to vote the people out that are at the state level.
In the fortune of the state of Iowa, the people don't have a say. So they cannot vote. It's up to the people in the state to decide for us, hey, this will pass it. This doesn't pass, this passes, this doesn't. Oh, be quiet. You cannot, the meetings are set at this time. I understand that. So but it's, a lot of people are getting fed up. If you can, at least be transparent. The meeting has to be at this time. If you guys are not going to come after the meeting for more, for more, for more of your opinions. Because like I said, a lot of people want to come here, but it's too early. You're going to get off of work. Not everyone's going to get off of work. Got to get the kids, whatever. So just to make it, we have to start. We can, even just to take time of your own schedule, one, just do it, even if it's a off-the-books meeting, just to say, get the input from people. That's my, my suggestions.
Absolutely.
As the mayor pointed, the mayor pointed out, that's what we do, to your point, to the budget hearings that we've had are on Saturdays. And we go pretty much, well, we go as long as we need to, as long as the public shows up. So we're hoping Saturdays will work. We've been doing that for a number of years.
And for something like this.
For a number of years now.
You really need the input from people. So that way, they don't get mad at you guys. So at least, at least give them the opportunity to come and post that, hey, we're going to have another meeting on Saturday at this time, you know, so you guys can come. If you guys don't come, then you, you can see.
We have budget hearings that are well-publicized and nobody shows up. That's where the discussion needs to start because that's where we make
Okay.
the actual decisions to get where we're at here. And.
And I looked at your, at your Facebook page. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not. But I know you guys are doing a little bit better, at least far as your Facebook page. I don't have Instagram or TikTok, any of that stuff. You know, that's mostly my younger crowd. But yeah, that's my biggest concern there. So at least get it out there and try to do something. If things, you got to, you guys as a city council, as a representatives in the cities and all this, you got to push the stuff up there. Tell them, hey, man, we're getting all this. We're getting whacked. People are angry at us. They're probably not looking at us, giving us angry faces.
Trust me, sir, we have done that many times. The state legislature looks at the cities like stepchildren. I hate to tell you that. But anyway, let's give other people a chance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I can come up for a short clip, Matt?
Yes, you can. Not two minutes, but.
Uh, don't tell old professors, might give a chance.
Okay. I just want to clarify the, as I understand the homestead exemption, my statement here is thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars. And I think it's going to sixty-five hundred next year, or the next statement, I guess.
If it passes.
Huh?
If it passes through, it will.
Okay. Well, that's the new bill. I guess I'm unfamiliar with the new bill.
Hasn't passed yet.
It hasn't passed yet.
Has passed, yeah. And the military exemption is four thousand. Now, those two amounts, the thirty-two fifty and the four thousand on my tax statements, that's a subtraction from your taxable value. And it's not four thousand dollars offset of taxes, no.
Yes, it is.
No, this is a change.
This is a change. It's entirely different. They're proposing that you won't pay tax if your tax bill's under sixty-five hundred dollars.
Total?
Total.
All three?
Teresa, Finance Director.
Well, they dumped that back on the government, city governments, county governments to make that up.
Yeah.
So my kids are going.
I'm in a better position to pay taxes than my kids are. But my kids are going to pay so I can get a free one. It doesn't make sense.
So, yeah, it's going from an exemption to a credit. So it would be, it would be a credit towards your taxes instead of an exemption that would be moved off of the taxable.
Yep.
That's what they're proposing.
That's a big credit.
It would be huge and we'd have to make it up somewhere else, which would be significant on all those that impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm Cindy Johnson. And I have a proposed, like, when the tax levy, where does it end? I'm Cindy Johnson, and I have a, propose like, when the tax levy, where does it end? Seniors only get two percent, and you guys want eleven, fifteen, twenty. Where does it stop? And as far as that sixty-five hundred dollars, they go over with your land and everything else. So, when it was like thirty-five hundred, no, that's part in with it, and you still pay more. I thought that too. Okay, you wouldn't have to pay that, no, you pay that.
In the past, yes, but this is new legislation that's out there right now.
Right.
It will be a credit. So if your property taxes are thirty-five hundred dollars, you will not owe thirty-five hundred dollars. You will not be writing a check to.
Well, they said it would go around.
No.
Right.
This is different. This is a new bill coming through.
So if the seniors are not getting, you know, like two percent, and you guys want eleven, where does it stop? We can't afford this. And then, um, I thought some of this was more for the city part than the county with the tax. Like you guys want, the city wants more money for all their buildings, they want to build this and that. We already have too many apartment buildings that are empty, and yet, you guys want to build more? And then, what was on TV today about that? Baseball?
We're not building those things, ma'am.
Okay.
Developers are building those, they're just buying some property that the city owns.
I know, but don't we pay taxes on it?
No.
No?
You don't pay taxes on someone else's building.
But doesn't the city want money for this and that?
Well, we'll use the revenue from the property taxes, yes, to pay our bills and for development. But the baseball practice function, or center that you're speaking of, that's a private company purchasing a piece of property from the city so they can build a new business. That, that, that's not us building it. We, we don't have anything to do with that, we just are selling a piece of land.
And how the city wants more money, doesn't that go for all your guys' raises?
We don't get raises, ma'am.
We haven't, the county makes way more than any city council member does. We, I don't, I don't know the last time, three years ago.
Twenty-twenty was the last raise.
I, I take a paid deduction to be at these meetings. By the time you deduct my salary as a teacher, I pay, I'm losing money to be here. And I'm happy to be here, and I love it, because I love advocating for the citizens of the city. But, no. I'm sorry, just no.
Okay, well, we just need to watch our budget too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move, the hearing is closed. Or I guess I say the hearing is closed. Do we have to vote on that? Okay? Okay? Passes five zero, I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
And those of you that are here for the four o'clock meeting, we cannot start until four twenty, so we'll be back.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Legislations applied from the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Uh, McGrath, you want to come up?
Thank you. Um, we'll just put them by my wallet in this one.
Sorry about that. We have a commendation that reads, whereas over the last thirty years, Acme Comics and Collectibles have been a place for fans of all types to gather and share the love of comic books, science fiction, gaming, costuming, and more. And whereas in two thousand and four, Acme was named the Will Eisner Spirit of Comics Retail Award recipient, beating over five thousand comic book stores around the world. This award was presented at San Diego CommCon by the legendary comic writer Will Eisner himself. Whereas actors from hit movies such as Star Wars, Ghostbusters, Back to the Future, Who Framed Roger Rabbit, and Power Rangers have visited Acme to meet fans. Whereas Acme has hosted numerous charity giveaways for charities such as Make-A-Wish, the Peter Mayhew Foundation, the Ronald McDonald House, the Friends of the Sioux City Police Department, and many others. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, to hereby recognize the thirtieth anniversary of Acme in Sioux City and commend this observance to all citizens. Say a few words, I've been to your store many times, and a lot of people I didn't think I would meet, so thank you for that. Go ahead and say a few words.
You had to do like rock, paper, scissors, who asked to speak, or what?
Well, thank you so much, folks. I mean, with Sioux City's been a part of my life, all of my life, I've lived here forever. My dad owned Williams TV and Appliance. Um, so, I mean, it was natural for us to want to open a store here in Sioux City and to support all of the charities and things here locally, and just make a fun place for nerds to hang out.
I think that.
You do a great job.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you have a good day. Come on up, Larry. Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve.
Well, I've been a member of this community all my life. I feel I can make a contribution to that board. Um, I've carried plumbing and HVAC license for over thirty-some years in this town. And I've been an active landlord for over twenty-five years with multiple properties, including multi-family properties. I think I can make a pretty good contribution.
Dave?
Miss you on campus, man, do a good job.
Been three years, I retired three years ago, so, yep.
Thanks for being willing to serve in this capacity, too.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda today, that, the consent agenda is items three through fifteen D. Consider them passed unanimously unless council member asks for a vote. Uh, if you want to speak on an agenda item, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember to always state your name for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the March seventeenth city council minutes. Four is a resolution setting a hearing on the adoption of the annual budget and the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty capital improvement program. Five is a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes series twenty-twenty-five and levying a tax for payment. Six is a resolution authorizing negotiations with HDR for grant writing services. Seven's a resolution authorizing a notice of intent, a request for release of funds in an environmental review, environmental assessment, including a notice of finding of no significant impact for the Home Investment Partnership Program for the Midtown Terrace Project. Eight is a resolution temporarily closing Pier Street and adjacent alleys for April second for the Bob Dylan Concert. Nine are resolutions approving partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. Ten is a resolution awarding a purchase order to CW Government for desktop scanners. Eleven is a resolution rejecting the bids received for the proposed construction of the Twelfth Street and Floyd Boulevard Storm Sewer Repair Project. Twelve are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution granting a permit to FibroCom to maintain underground cable around nine hundred fourth street. B is a resolution approving an addendum to the Administrative Services Agreement with Mission Square Retirement. C is a resolution approving a renewal option to the purchase order with SPI for asphalt millings, crushed concrete, and crushed asphalt. D is a resolution approving renewal option two to the purchase order with Jero for liquid asphalt. E is a resolution approving renewal option one for the service provider agreement with lines and stripes for the fire hydrant painting project. F is a resolution approving a renewal option one to the service provider agreement for CNC lawn care for Public Works Seating Project. G is a resolution approving a renewal option two to the purchase order for PVS DX for sodium hypochlorite. H is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to SULAN Certified Testing Services for the Twenty-Ninth Street Reconstruction Project. I is a resolution approving a second amendment of the Development Agreement and a Minimum Assessment Agreement for one oh one West Third Street, for property at one oh one West Third Street. Thirteen's actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving a city deed to the McDonald's Real Estate Company for land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, the property at thirty-one hundred Floyd Boulevard. B is a resolution inviting proposals of sale of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of David and Jeff Carrion and an affiliate, or an affiliated entity, and scheduling a hearing of the property at eight hundred Expo Center Drive. C is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Jimmy Holcomb, and scheduling a hearing for the property at twenty-five hundred Ogden Avenue. Fourteen are applications for alcohol licenses, fifteen beer commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero. Sixteen's a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of March eleventh, I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning nineteen oh one Pier Street. The petitioner, Scott Mann, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this item, I'll move it. Second. Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed?
Councilman O'Kane?
Passes five zero, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? No. I'll move that. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. I'll move second and third. Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Eighteen's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings for the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes, GCP dash one, I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed? Passes five zero. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings for the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes, GCP two, I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed? Passes five zero. Twenty's a hearing resolution instituting proceedings for the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes, GCP dash three, I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard, the hearing's now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed? Passes five zero. Twenty-one's a hearing resolution instituting proceedings for the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes, ECP, I'll move that. Second. Public hearings now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed? Passes five zero. Twenty-two's a hearing and resolution approving a farm lease with Capital Management for property adjacent to fifty-eight hundred twenty-eighth street, deferred from March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. You'll have to move that. I'll, I'll move it. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard?
Hi, Rick Bertrand, fifteen oh one Peavy Street. Um, I emailed everybody, did they get a copy of that by chance?
Yeah.
Pretty detailed. I don't feel like I got to really go through it too much. Um, what I'm asking for today is, after kind of, the facts kind of came out, and I think it provides a pretty good timeline of kind of the past handshake agreement between the Smiths, and now kind of what's being asked from, from Capital Management. What I'm asking for is, I'm, actually, I'm here to support it. I want to support, um, uh, basically codifying or putting, sending a contract form. Um, but I also want to, um, reject the idea, because I think the, adding the fifty-one acres exceeds fair market value, as we're at. So when you look at this thing, it goes from the existing agreement that was put in place by Mr. Vondrak, the former city attorney, and Mr. Doyle, um, was, was granted for access for the property and for the wells. And to, obviously, to, um, maintain them in any future, um, wells that they need, to really protect Mr. Smith's property. And, and Doyle knew that. And we would have done the same thing if it had been our property, is, they're trying to shut down the landfill, it's public use, and the wells are put in place, not just to shut down the well with the DNR, but also to protect that land or his property, to get a baseline. Because if years later, if that, that continues to seep into his property, he will have financial damage done to his property. So, it makes complete sense that why they want, wanted the wells on there at the time, he just didn't want to put it in formal writing. The DNR comes in, says we want it in formal writing at this point, I don't blame the DNR. The DNR says, we want written access. Through this process, what we found out is that compensation was provided since two thousand and thirteen to the Smith family, which was the twenty-seven acres, basically the twenty-eight acres of grass, grass ground. So, now when they go to renew this thing, we say, okay, in good faith, the city negotiates and says, we'll grant you, they requested, they didn't demand, they requested the ten point four acres additional, uh, along with the four point five. Um, that represents a fifty-three percent increase in compensation and access to the existing agreement. When you look at it from a legal opinion standpoint, um, truthfully, they really, because it's a handshake, and, and what I know now by the agreement, and if this was to go to, um, let's just say, an affidavit or district court, I think that what you see in my brief would probably hold up what the story was, that the original agreement was, which was, they were given access, to maintain access, future wells, whatever needs to happen. In good faith, the city reaches out, that's fine, but the additional fifty-one acres, which was right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm not judging, was grazed over the last couple decades, free, um, and was put in place. Um, they've gotten compensation for that, and they're asking for that now. So you're going from twenty-seven acres to roughly ninety-four, ninety-five acres of compensation. When you look at what, you look at what exceeds fair market value, that exceeds fair market value. Now, the argument's going to be two arguments from staff, and I understand what they're trying to do, there's two things. Number one is, they're going to say, is this cleans up a mess, and they've used these agreements in the past. Hundred percent, the city has used these type of agreements where they go around the procurement process. And that's okay, because normally, it's a landlocked piece of property, or there's no way there to dispute it. And that's always been the risk when they put these development, when they put these type of agreements together. When you talk to the past agreements, the word risk always comes up. I get it, but the risk, the risk, the risk is, is that, is that they're going to be someone to challenge it, and that's where I'm at. I'm challenging it, say it's not free market, fair market value. So what I'm asking for is, move forward with the agreement, give them the ten point four and the four point five, let's give them a fifty-three percent increase in value. Send the fifty-one acres out to the proper legal procurement process, which again, they're probably going to outbid me, they got more money than I do anyway, as a neighbor next door, I'm only going to give so much for, for grazing rights, but at least I want to have a shot. It's, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we've never got to graze it before. I'm going to go in there fighting hard to try to get that ground. It lines up, if you saw by the map, it lines up perfectly with the three pieces of ground, it's adjacent, straight east, where then we're landlocked at the, at the, uh, at the bypass. So, in fairness, and actually by the legal, by law, this should go to procurement, um, which then us, the Smiths, and anyone else can then have a legal right to put, put a blind bid in, and to get those grazing rights. Other than that, um, I thank for the consideration, and, and again, it just makes sense. Any question on that brief? Great, thanks for reading it.
Thank you.
City, continue the hearing from the last meeting, is there additional information that you wish to have from staff presented at this time? Otherwise, we'll just go on what was presented at the last meeting.
What's what I want Rick to know, what's difficult for me, and I, you know this inside and out, okay? And I've and I've studied it, but but just I'm trying to talk to you is is what what my trouble is right now is it seems like we've got a hard deadline with IDNR, which I don't like that. I wish we could sort this out and do it, you know.
Did you see how I addressed that?
Yes, in your in your.
Basically, the IDNR, I talked to the IDNR, they're looking at, they are working with the city. They're looking at a possible fine, which then can be can be, sorry.
They are looking at a fine if it does happen and when the time, if you work, if the city is working in good faith towards an agreement, which they are, all we're doing in here is is what I think should happen, if I was in those chairs, I would amend this agreement, drop the 51 and send the 51 to procurement. Because if it does even get fined, you can defer the fine until the agreement is settled, then you appeal it and they drop the fine. It's it's so they're not getting the pressure, plus the DNR has not made a formal, a formal request to put wells in at this point. They're suggesting that wells in the future might be happening. They're looking at this point to basically to say they need to get the access they already have. The problem here, Dan, with this argument, is you can't have it both ways. Capital management can't have it both ways. They can't operate under the current agreement, which means they're getting to use the 27, 28 acres. So they're operating under the old agreement. Then they're saying they now, we're not going to uphold the old agreement, which is leaving you have access, plus put new wells if you need to, to protect the city and to protect the Smith property. You can't have it both ways because because they are operating off the old agreement and then now trying to renegotiate the new based upon it. Does that make sense? And it changed hands also. It's just it's a different entity.
Yeah.
So that's that's where I'm at. So I see the urgency. This is completely challengeable, as you know that, and the whole thing about condemnation, there's a reason why this is a request and not a demand for a new contract. The moment they they deny access to these wells on a public, an old public property, an old public landfill, it was public operated, it is automatically qualifies for condemnation for public use. That's why they're not throwing you off the property. They never will throw you off the property because they know they don't want the condemnation process. They've also identified a fair market value for the easement, which is which is the route that they should go. I don't, you don't want the condemnation. Take the 63,000 and give them the easement, keep the 27 acres. I mean, there's there's a deal to be cut here, but I don't think it needs to be that that we skirt the procurement process and he's given 100 acres where he was getting 27 for the exact same agreement. You're expanding the agreement by 153%. 100, oh, sorry, 138% is what you're expanding. If you if you pass it as is, they get 138% increased in compensation and access for the exact same agreement that's in place that they're operating under because they're currently using the 27. The urgency with the DNR is not there, Dan. It's not there. That you this, the city wants this cleaned up, and I get it. It's a sloppy handshake deal, and they want to go back and and they they don't want to go through procurement on this, and I get it. But the problem is when they've used these agreements in the past, doesn't make them right. They're just not challengeable. This one's being challenged.
Well, I have a great deal of respect for you, and I, that's why I'm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm stating that. And then the other thing, Rick, that you don't want to hear is that the city attorney's office is advising, at least I'm reading their advice, is being different than what you're outlining. What you're outlining might be a perfect situation to to do, but there's there's probably some risk involved.
Can I ask you this? How how is the city going to get around the procurement process if it's challenged?
The city, in order to sell land or to lease land, is just required to conduct a hearing, which the hearing is scheduled and we're conducting it currently.
But you're, they're getting, they see an exchange for something, so it is compensation.
And I would say additionally, there have been appraisals done by the land agency that we use, which valued the land for the lease as well as the permanent easement.
So in these deals passed, Nicole, have they ever been challenged?
You always have the right to challenge, Rick. You know that.
I know that, but I'm saying is that the reason that these are used, Mr. Mayor, is because they're not challenged. Normally, they're landlocked piece of properties. They're an easy way out. They're a cleanup mechanism. There's history here. This is sloppy, guys, and I get it, but it's not right. And I'm not saying that the Smiths are going to be kicked off the property or denied the property. I'm saying is give me and the other neighbor, who are the only really two players in place, give us a fair opportunity. This is a lifetime. I haven't been on it for a lifetime because in the legal, we we had a right to it and we weren't on it. All I'm saying is that it's going to be a 15-year lease, which is my lifetime, my grazing lifetime, is saying, give me a sniff at it. If I get outbid, I get outbid and it's game on. They still get another 14, 14 and a half acres, which is 53% more compensation on an existing deal. Amend it on the floor, kick the 51 out, throw it to procurement, and then this thing is wrapped up and it's cleaned up. You still get the cleanup. You still get both objective. You you meet both goals. You clean it up and it's the fair and the thing. And another thing, too, guys, why is it every time I disagree with the city, I got to spend money and go to go to court? And then it works out there. Why can't we do this without having to go to court? Why do I, why do we have to do it that way? Because you guys have attorneys, it doesn't cost you 25 grand to do it. It's it's not right. The the average citizen, it's just, I get it, it's muscle. You guys just go out there and say, well, if you don't like it, take it to district court. Well, if I go to district court, I bring in the one existing person that's still alive in the agreement. He's going to give an affidavit of what I just said. The handshake agreement was access for the wells and new wells as long as it needs to shut down the public property. Now, what does the city do? The agreement is is in place. So again, I I don't hold the argument. This should go and give us both a fair shot and see what happens. I get the city wants it. They can get it both, you can have it both ways. Amend it, throw the 51 out, cut the deal, it's done, your DNR is happy, and throw the 51 out back to the public bid.
You wait for both? Did you close the hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. Hearing's now closed. I'm sorry. I vote no. I.
It's long, guys. It's long, you know.
I I tell you why I vote no. Number one, 15-year lease is way too long on this. We don't, we may, we may not even need it for the for the duration of the landfill. It's, I think that's just unacceptable. I have complained since I got back on this council that we let the Smiths have ground to graze for free for way too long. I mean, you talk about just compensation. They've had these 50 acres. They've been grazing on it since I got back on the council 13 years ago. And that's what bothers me is they're getting, even going forward, it's fair now, it wasn't fair when they got it for the last how many years? It's it's, and I like, I like the Smiths, but it's it's a fairness deal for me. I just never liked the deal. It was flaky 13 years ago. If we were going to address it, that's when we should have done. Citizen concerns.
I want to take a few minutes to address the funding for the Human Rights Commission. First, I'd like to acknowledge the very difficult job the city council and city management has in trying to put together a working budget, particularly given the challenges created by our state legislature and their recent moves. I appreciate your hard work, even if I don't agree with all of the decisions you make. Second, I want to mention that this is only the second time I've ever addressed the city council in the nearly 23 years I've lived in Sioux City. I share that only to emphasize how much I think this issue is important. On that note, I want to make a few relevant points that I hope will encourage the council to give more thought to what I still believe was a capricious and unthought-out decision to cut the Human Rights Commission by an unconscionable amount, crippling its ability to pursue its mission for city residents. Additionally, true or not, the nature of the cut, not coming from the finance department and the normal budgeting process, but rather thrown out by the mayor with no clarification on how that number was arrived at. Further, based on various email exchanges between council members and city staff, in which one council member specifically asked about the HRC director's total compensation, which, curiously, is almost the exact amount of the of the cut that the mayor suggested cutting from the HRC budget. So with that, given given that, one might naturally conclude that there was a certain amount of retribution involved, or at minimum, a desire to terminate the director in the only way possible, since that decision remains with the commission and not with the council. What's more, no other department, as you all alluded to last meeting, is facing such draconian cuts. Why? Why only this one, without any justification? Beyond the potential personnel issues, is the concern that the HRC is not doing as much work, closing as many cases as it should be? I know that's been a concern. However, I did some very quick research, which all of you could have done, to see if that was the case. The Iowa Civil Rights Commission, which has a budget of $2.6 million and a full-time staff of 27 plus part-time staff, resolves just over 500 cases per year. Applying that percentage of the budget and the staff of the Sioux City HRC to that, the average number of cases that the Sioux, the Sioux City Human Rights Commission should be expected to close is 48, roughly what it's been doing every year. So its performance is right in line with what our state Civil Rights Commission is doing. Further, it is not a speedy process. An average case at the state takes 186 days to resolve, with some of them taking as long as three years. The fact that our Human Rights Commission has been able to not only clear cases but also clear through some backlog shows that they are working right on or better than that pace. So we have a Human Rights Commission that is on pace with the state. We have an HRC with a budget of $400,000, which is less than two one thousandths of the overall proposed city budget. Nothing. It is nothing. Yet the council seems unable to find $120,000 to continue this important work. $120,000 would be the $140,000 cut you suggested, less the 20,000 that the finance department or 18,000 something that the finance department actually recommended. The city has provided millions of dollars.
I'm going to.
I've got one more sentence and I'll be finished. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has provided millions of dollars in tax abatements. I think it was 3 million something, including homes that are valued at over $1 million in Whispering Creek, tax abatements. So they pay no taxes that could have supported that, but we don't have $120,000 to make sure that the those of us who are most vulnerable in the community have some protections. Surely, you can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Ackberg. I reside at 52 McDonald Drive. This is my very first time speaking in front of the council, and I wanted to.
That means your time's cut short.
Not a bad ringtone. Anyway, I I really, I'm staying up here to tell you how much I believe in government, and I I can only imagine how hard it is faced with the challenges that you're faced with to make these hard decisions. You know, with with the punch-down politics that the federal government's doing and all the takeaways that they're that they're that they're doing to our our public and then what the state's doing, I find it sad and a little bit concerning that you all had an opportunity to have that stop here. And instead, you've chosen to cut funding to the Human Rights Commission. I'm not going to be able to speak so eloquently as that gentleman there, I'm kind of going off the cuff, but it does concern me to know that when I moved back to Sioux City, one of the things that stood out so bright to me was the faces of Sealand. You know, the the event that they hold every year, and and it saddens me to think that this is going to be the last one held. I hope that we can see a way forward with an event like that, but if this is the last one, I really do, it breaks my heart for the for the community. It saddens me to think that we couldn't have made different choices on where to save money. Again, I understand that this is not, I'm sure, an easy choice, but I commend those who voted against this because I think that, you know, it, what that commission did was it really helped those who needed the help most. And it saddens me, you know, I've dedicated myself to getting people to vote, and I think what we're up against now is the idea that people do not trust government. They do not think government works for them. And I think cutting the budget is is just showing them that they're right. And so when you go out and you knock doors around this community and people say that they do not believe in it and that they're actually happy with the jail and the way the jail's going because that's where they think they're going to end up. It saddens me, it disgusts me, and the fact that you've cut the budget in the way you did, it's very upsetting, and I just wanted to voice my concern on that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Heidman, H-E-I-D-M-A-N. If my remarks repeat something, Ryan just said, I'm sorry, because the acoustics are very bad in here for an older lady. But I just wonder if you've considered the optics of slashing the Human Rights Commission budget in light of the current anti-DEI frenzy? I think it makes the city less welcoming for current residents and off-putting to off to outsiders. Thank you.
My name is Raven Christensen, C-H-R-I-S-T-E-N-S-E-N. Using the number of cases closed is a ridiculously inadequate metric for determining the funding of any Human Rights Commission. A well-functioning HRC is able to intervene and correct discriminatory actions and situations before cases are filed. When I was struggling at work with my team lead, after she became aware of my diagnosis, I reached out to the HRC for aid. They were able to give me information and education for me and my supervisor, and we were able to come to an amicable, between ourselves, solution. So when my pregnant friend was struggling to make it through the day because her manager was denying her access to food and water, despite knowing about her pregnancy complications, we reached out again. They were able to provide us with the adequate information and education for her and her manager to resolve the situation without any cases needing to be filed. This HRC was able to protect your citizens and correct these situations, even though these and countless other situations are not reflected in the number of cases they closed in a year. Do not slash the budget this much because you are going to be leaving your citizens without their protection.
Thank you.
My name is Shannon Kennedy, S-H-A-N-N-O-N-K-E-N-N-E-D-Y. And this is my third time talking about the same issue. I think the first time, the first issue I have ever also come to the city council to talk about. So along with the other people who have spoken, I continue to be deeply concerned about this proposed 40% budget cut to the Human Rights Commission, a decision that will severely impact our most vulnerable citizens. One recommendation from this council was to reduce the HRC to a single Sioux City employee with all other cases going, being referred to the state. This plan is unacceptable for several reasons. First of all, while the state of Iowa has contributed to these funding challenges, it is inaccurate to suggest that they are solely responsible for this drastic cut. Other Iowa cities, such as Davenport, Waterloo, and Cedar Rapids, have recently approved budgets without significantly reducing their human rights funding. This demonstrates that local control and local funding decisions do play a vital role. Second, directing Sioux City residents to Des Moines for assistance is a disservice. Many of our citizens, especially those facing housing discrimination or landlord disputes, require immediate local support. Simple questions like what does this notice from my landlord mean, or what should I do about it, are often resolved quickly by a local Human Rights Commission staff, preventing costly and time-consuming civil rights cases. This saves both the city and local landlords valuable resources. Furthermore, legal aid services in Sioux City are already overburdened. They cannot adequately address the influx of landlord and renter issues that would result from sending cases to the state. Local control is demonstrably more effective in serving our residents' needs. Council members, you do have the authority to reallocate these funds and rectify this situation. Prioritizing the Human Rights Commission is not just a matter of budget, it's a matter of ensuring justice and equitable treatment for all Sioux City residents. I urge you to reconsider this damaging decision and restore the Human Rights Commission's vital funding, except for the 18,000-some dollars that they agreed to cut.
Anyone else?
Counsel's concerns?
So, speaking on Faces of Sioux Land, this Sunday from two twelve, from noon to four P.M., is the last Faces of Sioux Land. It is, I think it's our largest city event every year, a, a city-sponsored event, so it should be a, a good one to attend, I'm hopeful that it won't be the last one, but I look forward to it every year. Another thing to put on the radar Thursday, April twenty-fourth, is our, I shouldn't say "our," but the Book Lovers Book Sale from four to eight, and this ties directly into something that was said earlier about finding partnerships that are able to kind of offset some costs that we have for the city, because Friends of the Sioux City Public Library always does a great job with helping us raise funds for our library, and the book sale is one of my other most looked-forward-to events every year, so it's a good place to stock up on books for the year, and the library can always use the support. And that is everything for this week.
Julie?
Um, I can't think of anything more than what I've said earlier, and I, again, I wanna bring attention to these legislatures, the legislative bills that are coming through that do take money from the city, and there's a potential of more being taken, kept from us through our property taxes. Please, go online, read about them, I think K T I V's gonna mention them in their story, do some research when it comes to that as well. There's lots of construction projects getting ready to open up here pretty soon, we have one on Hamilton, I noticed somebody was not happy with it this morning, but, most of the time, they're short, though as the weather permits, we're gonna be fixing some more streets and potholes, that's what everybody wants, we have six million dollars in the budget for that this year. That's all I can think of, thank you.
Alex?
Hopefully some of you have been able to attend the NAI National Tournament, we're pretty blessed to be able to have that in our community, and welcome those athletes every year. I'm excited and look forward to the two local teams that are gonna be battling down there tonight, and so I would encourage you, if you haven't been down there, to support them, to be able to stop down tonight should be a good one, with a couple of big matchups and the championship tomorrow, so. Looking forward to that, that's all I have, Mayor.
I'm excited, one of those teams is Briar Cliff University at eight o'clock tonight, so I'll be cheering them on for sure, but it's, it's really well-run, I'm just so impressed with the people that have put this NAI, a tournament together in Sioux City, and welcome our visitors and, and the teams that play, it's just been, it's, it's just a super exciting year, and so I'm looking forward to it, that's all I have, Mayor.
We adjourn. Second?
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Okane.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
You have one?
Can I have that?